Buenos en Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation and Procurement is calling its public hearing to order. It is now 10:30 a.m., Friday, September 6, 2019. Notice of today's public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on August 29, 2019, meaning the five-day notice and September 4, 2019, meaning the forty-eight-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill 198-35 LS, sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to adopt the rules and regulations for the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Recycling Revolving Fund. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4 p.m. today. Please address the testimony to myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson on the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation and Procurement, or it can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the legislature or emailed to office@senatorparis.org. So to begin our agenda. So Bill 198-35, first of all, actually, I want to thank everyone attending this public hearing. I would like to especially thank the staff at Guam EPA and the board members for their hard work and diligence in developing the rules and regulations for the recycling revolving fund. In addition, I would like to thank the staff of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Department of Administration, the Attorney General's Office, the Office of the Governor for doing their due diligence in their review of these rules per the administrative adjudication process. One would say that this bill is long overdue, and it definitely is a milestone. Bill 198-35 is an important bill to adopt the rules and regulations of the recycling revolving fund that will promote recycling and environmental cleanup efforts and ensure the accountability of the use of these funds under the regulatory expertise of Guam EPA. Bill 198-35 authorizes the Administrator of Guam EPA to manage, maintain, and administer the funds deposited to the recycling revolving fund through motor vehicle registration fees pursuant to public law 27-38 in order to fund the following priorities. The first priority is removal of junk vehicles, tires, batteries, waste oil, white goods, and appliances. The second priority is paper, cardboard, plastic, and glass. The third priority is other recyclables as determined by the Administrator. These priorities will be addressed through programs such as the Mayor's Council of Guam's Islandwide Environmental Cleanup Program and the Recycling Industry Economic Stimulus Program. Bill 198-35 also bookmarks future programs to aid and expand recycling efforts. These include the Guam Beverage Container Recycling Program, the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, the Green Waste Plan, the Disaster Debris Management and Zero Waste Grants Program. Bill 198-35 also enables the revolving capability of the fund, which is subject to questionable appropriations. In 2015, a moratorium was recommended on the use of the funds for any items outside of those listed by the law after an audit by the Office of the Public Accountability. Bill 198 is an important milestone since the creation of the fund in 2003. To be clear, the Bill 198-35 does not increase fees. Rather, its purpose is to restore the functionality and accountability of the recycling revolving fund and to increase recycling and cleanup efforts islandwide at this very critical time. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues who have joined me here today. To my right is, and the Vice Chair is Senator Therese Terlahi, and to my left is Senator Kelly Marsh Titano of this committee. Thank you for joining me. So at this time, I would like to call up those that have signed up to testify. If you did not sign up and would like to testify, please come up to the table, and if you can state your name prior to your testimony. We'll be starting from my left, which is your right, and move on down. So I have right now, I think EPA, Guam EPA, has provided testimony. Would you like to provide oral testimony in addition to the written testimony?
(Inaudible)
Okay.[290.02][290.02](Laughter) As well as Dave Duñez, and I believe that's all that signed up. But if you feel like you're inclined to testify, Mayor Rudy Matanani is here today. So please come to the table, and we'll move down the row. So we can start. If you're going to speak, you can turn on the, press the button. The light will turn red, and just speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Speaker. Good morning, Senator Perez, Senator Marsh Titano. My name is Walter Leongro. I'm the Administrator of Guam EPA, who, the agency is currently in charge of managing the revolving recycling fund. I'd like to make us do the oral statement that matches the written statement. The Guam EPA fully supports Bill 198-35. Many of us can agree that these rules and regulations are long overdue. If passed into law, the agency would be able to fully comply with 10 GCA 51307C so that the full potential of this fund can be realized by the entire island community. We are pleased to be working with an administration and legislature that understands the true gamut of the beneficial impacts that the RRF can bring to the community in terms of increased public involvement with recycling and waste management. We are encouraged to continue working with you all throughout this administrative process. The recycling industry's economic stimulus program and the Mayor's Council of Guam Islandwide Environmental Cleanup Program found in these proposed rules and regulations are just a starting point. Once we have the proper statutory mechanisms in place, we look forward to your continued support to allow these rules and regulations to evolve. Initiatives that will produce concrete results through the inclusion of the following: Disaster debris management provides for hardened and permitted transition sites in times of post-disaster recovery at the municipal level while ensuring proper debris removal and recycling efforts with full compliance under FEMA's reimbursement eligibility requirements. The Guam Beverage Container Act provides the proper funding mechanism to initiate, assist, and encourage redemption of recyclable beverage containers in accordance with 10 GCA Chapter 44. Green waste planning provides for a true and effective permitted and composting program on Guam. The Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, providing funding opportunities to cost-effectively reduce illegal dumping, effectively manage waste reduction in the landfill, and protect human and environmental health. A zero-waste grant program provides competitive grant funding opportunities to educational institutions, nonprofit, and governmental agencies for projects, programs, and studies that support zero waste. It is critical that the agency continue to demonstrate responsible use of this fund. This demonstration starts with these rules and regulations being passed into law. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My team and I are available to answer any and all questions that you may have. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Walter. I would like to also acknowledge one of my colleagues that has joined us here today is Vice Speaker Talina Nelson.
Good morning, Senator.
So, yeah, we will hold questions for later, and so we'll move on to our next person who wants to testify, Mr. Dave Duñez.
Hafa Day, good morning. Madam Chair, and Senators, Honorable Senators, good morning. I'm here this morning in definite support of this bill. I think it's much needed, and it needs to be reestablished and mandates stipulated and follow from when it finally gets passed. You said we're going to be able to ask questions later on? I do have some questions in regards to the recycling funds that are collected. As we all know, it's collected via vehicle registrations. Are they, go ahead.
Sorry, Dave, this is an opportunity to testify.
Oh, okay.
Maybe you can phrase it in the way of concerns rather than questions.
Okay. Well, the concern that I have in regards to the funds that are collected, that they are dispersed promptly after, whether it be the fiscal year or such, I don't believe that has been historically the case. It has been dispersed, I know recently 1.3 was dispersed to the Mayor's Council for the removal of junk vehicles, white goods, et cetera. But I would like to see, my concern is that the funds that are collected, and that is in the priority as reading your bill, that is the number-one priority of junk vehicles, so that the funds, excuse me, are released promptly so that they can not, you know, I don't think that's been the case recently. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Yeah, well, yeah, thank you. All right. So Mayor Matanani.
Good morning, Senators. Chair Senator Perez, Senator Nelson, Senator Terlahi, and Senator Titano. First of all, I want to, you know, just say that I appreciate that there's four ladies here that think that the trash is very important and controlling here, and I appreciate that because I think, and I know that Jigo, I'm sorry, for the record, I'm Mayor Matanani of Jigo. I think everybody knows that Jigo's a very popular village because of the trash and the stray dogs, and I haven't really read the whole thing about this bill, but I'm here to support Bill 198-35, and I hope that we continue to work to make things easier in our villages as far as cleaning up the trash. That's all I have to say, and I want to thank you again for your hard work and trying to, you know, just work on this bill. Thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Mayor. Yeah, so actually, a lot of the hard work was done by the staff at Guam EPA and the agencies involved. So, yes, it was through their work. So I'd just like, at this time, to open up the floor to my colleagues for questions, starting from my left, Senator Kelly Marsh Titano.
Manana Sisus, and thank you for taking the time to come here today. So it's very good to see that with this bill that the right stakeholders have been part of establishing this. It's good to hear of some additional suggestions by EPA and of some of the concerns. So I too, like others, am here in support of this much-needed legislation and these much-needed rules and regulations, and I will be continuing to look over the testimony you're providing in the bill itself to be making sure that, as much as possible, it's as strong as possible as we're moving forward with it.
Sisus Massey, Senator Marsh Titano. Senator Therese Terlahi.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your testimony. I want to also thank EPA for their hard work on this. I know you have been working on this for years, and we've all been looking forward to the results, so congratulations. Can I just ask, the programs outlined in here, of course, are, seem very well thought about and beneficial, but what happens immediately? What, when this bill is passed, what will be the immediate result?
So if this bill is passed, it'll give the opportunity for the Administrator, myself currently, to identify, again, when we first put this packet together, we gave multiple options, only to discover that maybe, because we're not senators and very not, obviously not very good attorneys, the attorneys had to tell us, we don't have the authority to implement a lot of these things that we did. So the two that we've listed, the stimulus and to give to the Mayor's Council, we would sit down with the appropriate stakeholders, determine the amount of money that should be appropriated through the authority that you guys would give the Administrator, and then that would be taken to the board, the Guam EPA Board, being our policy board, and then they would either, could it either approve the recommendation or disapprove it. If it's approved, then we would go through the process of providing them money. So, and to try to make it simpler, if we decided to give the Mayor or the Council some money to continue the good work that they've done, removing vehicles this year, we would appropriate, you know, I would recommend a certain amount out of the money that we have for the fiscal year and present that to the board, and then if, again, upon their approval or disapproval, if it's approved, the money would be transferred to the Mayor's Council.
All right. So you'd have immediate access to the funds? Do you not have that right now?
So, per the statutes that there are, the funding is in an account, and outside of what's in the statutes, we cannot touch it at all. And so as soon as you give, if this bill passes the law, then we have the authority to go ahead and start dispersing.
All right, great. So, for example, one of the examples in your work with the mayors was to contract for the pickup of the bulk items or the white goods, right? And the cars, things like that? All right. The, will this, will these rules allow you to use the funds for past debts?
Currently, as it's written, no.
All right. And I see that you want, or that you will be coming back for additional statutory authority for the other programs that you listed earlier, and I want to congratulate you, by the way, on your forum, the conference that you had. It was excellent, and you really did a good job of teaching us about these different programs that you have planned and are actually very close to implementing, so I want to congratulate you on that.
I appreciate that, Senator, but it's really the team's work, so I will convey that to them. Thank you.
All right. Well, I wish you the best on this new venture and implementing these, and I know you've got a lot of hard work behind it, so please let us know if there's anything else that we need to do.
Thank you, Senator Terlahi. Vice Speaker Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased to hear that the rules are in place. Last term, we were going through a bill that was trying to compensate an agency, a business for prior work done with the invoices seeming to, seemingly already to have been paid out to this business, and so I appreciate the stopgap for that. We need to move forward, and besides, that business was not under the agreement of EPA, so I really believe that it should not have come out of the recycling revolving fund. I guess the concern I have is the, some of the programs that we have implemented in the past and some of the appropriations we have implemented, we have used portions of the recycling revolving fund that are not stipulated now in these new rules. And so it's a challenge for us now to look for other ways to appropriate these certain agencies and how they function without the RRF money, but I suppose that's something that we need to look for, and I think this is a long time waiting that EPA does have the, should have the authority to discern whether the recycling revolving funds are to be used in certain areas of our community. Some of the challenges also, if we go dig a little deeper, is the removal of abandoned vehicles. In some areas, there are some mayors that say that they don't have the jurisdiction to remove an abandoned vehicle because they don't have the ownership of it, even though the abandoned vehicle has been there for so long. Does the recycling revolving fund rules allow this kind of adjudication process to take place so that these abandoned vehicles can be removed from the road?
I could venture my personal opinion. I would probably need to check with legal just to make sure, but the way we've handled things in the past of abandoned vehicles, first and foremost, if it's on a public easement, then it's a public nuisance, and that, I would assume that any government entity that has the ways and means and the proper authority to do it would, has the ability to take it, no matter who is the previous owner. What we try to do at Guam EPA is, when we find vehicles that are on public easement, we'll try to find who the owner is, whether it's looking at the VIN number or the license plate and cross-checking with rev and tax. And so I'm assuming that maybe the mayors that you have spoken to or talking to about vehicles that may be in people's properties, and that's where it might get a little sticky because government agencies don't just have the right unless there is an environmental or health issue directly, that can be directly shown for those vehicles being there. And again, that's, this is the part I'm not too sure of.
Yeah. So I think, I think we need to look into it a little bit more because this is on government property. One of the vehicles is right by Island Girl Power, the homeless shelter there. There's a vehicle that's been sitting there for years, and the mayor says that they don't have the jurisdiction to remove that vehicle.
Yeah. Sort of, give me a second, I can check with my team. I know I've been there 25 years, but I just, I don't know everything, so maybe these guys have a better...
Perhaps something to share. Hello, Mr. Gutierrez.
The Acting Air and Land Administrator, I've not heard of that. So as the Administrator stated, when it's on public easement or public property, we do have the right to remove it as a nuisance, and if it's on private property, there's another way we can do it is, basically, we can write them a ticket for, excuse me, abandoning their vehicle on public or private property even, or we can issue them a notice of violation to remove the vehicle, one of the three ways. But if the mayor, specific mayor is having a problem, they can come to us, and we can help them address it.
Okay.
So we've not heard that, that there's a problem. If they brought it to our attention, then we would address it a number of ways.
Okay, great, because this vehicle, I think, is still there, right in front of one of the Gora housing, and it's been abandoned. This is when we went to tour the homeless shelter.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, and we'll find out why it hasn't been removed or why they're saying that there's no means to remove it, because there's definitely different venues that, I mean, different ways that we can take care of that.
Okay. And then also, I believe there was some form of complaint with an auto shop body placing abandoned vehicles here in Agania, and these vehicles are just continuing to pile up, and the Agania mayor also expressed concerns that, you know, this is on government easement, and they just don't know how to implement that process. And so I understand if we're going to also negotiate with the mayors and give them a piece of the recycling revolving fund, perhaps we also need to give them guidelines on their left and right limits and what they are allowed to do because they want to move it, it's just the challenge is, what can they do within the statute that allows them to perform this process?
Right. So with the mayors, with the money that goes to the mayor, there is an agreement that we've signed on the program. We could definitely put in a stipulation to remind them that on easement and government property, you have full authority. Again, the legality of, if a business is putting it there and they want to say that's their property, but yet they're using government property, that's something that...
Public easement.
Yeah. So that's something that we could, we'll definitely work with them on, and we'll get the AG's opinion through our legal counsel.
Okay. Well, I'd like to congratulate you on finally getting this process done and adjudicated for last term. We were trying to convince our colleagues, saying, please wait before we make this certain decision, because the RRF, EPA has been working very hard on making this happen, and so I'm very grateful for the work that you have done. I know it was years in the making, and so congratulations to that, and hope to see this pass come next session. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leongro. And thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. I noticed, and also in the rules and regs, it does fund the contracting for the Zero Waste Plan. So will EPA present that, or is there a timeline where EPA is going to present that plan to the public so we can get on board with the zero-waste initiative that EPA has created?
So currently, we do have a contractor, Jacobs, that is working with Guam EPA and stakeholders to finalize the zero-waste plan. I do not have a set date yet on when it's going to be finalized. We'll work on getting that to you, and that way you can...
I apologize, I don't have an answer for that right now, Senator.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, part of what my office is doing is we're working to kind of fill out the other parts of the rules and regs, and so perhaps I can create roundtables so we can get the public's input as well as maybe release some of that information that you guys have been working so hard on. So there's just a couple more questions from my colleagues. Senator Marsh Titano?
I just had one small question. So in reading through this, it was mentioning that only recyclable materials generated on Guam are eligible for payment under this section. So I can see a lot of reasons why that that's in place. It's very important that we're dealing with our situation and we're not necessarily opening up additional doors. But can somebody remind me, maybe EPA, if there are any of these materials that the military bring in from when they're out of our boundaries or when they're running exercises up in Saipan, does any of that material that's not generated on Guam per se come in through the military?
Our general policy at Guam EPA is we do not accept other islands' waste, and we've brought that up, and it may be, the need may arise to relook at that. With this, with the potential of the recycling and everything shutting down and trying to make Guam and our neighboring islands, whether it be the CNMI or the different island nations, if the only way to feasibly make a successful recycling area or region, we may have to start revisiting that policy. But currently, we don't allow, it gets flown through the waste, but we do not allow it into our landfill or the recyclables. I've recently allowed some of them to come through to the recycling centers, knowing that it's going to be moved through, but we try not to take any, anything that would encumber Guam itself. But again, that's something that may need to be revisited very soon.
That's very important to hear, so I'm glad you were able to share about that. And there were two parts to that. One is, it sounds like we're really taking a lot of measures to make sure that we're not getting that waste that's generated by the military if they're running exercises or doing things elsewhere. And I really liked hearing that we're working towards a regional plan. I know on the other islands, they are working towards sustainable, well, projects, they're working towards greener usage of energy, but also some recycling programs as well. But their population size may make a real difference. If Palau has 20,000 people on it, there may be only so much that they can do individually. So it's really good to hear that that thought of a regional plan is in our minds and may be something that we revisit. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titano. Senator Terlahi?
Walter, did I hear you say that you're going to revisit that because you want to allow it?
So to make something successful, you have to, unfortunately, you have to meet economic measures, and to be able to bring in successful recycling companies, because again, but the way the world economy is going right now, no one's accepting, hardly anybody's accepting anything recyclable now. So you almost have to do it yourself, and to bring in the industry to Guam alone, we do not, it'd be hard-pressed for our recyclable stream to entice a successful recyclable company to convert our recyclables. So, yes, I am, I would be for it if it, if things fall into place the way it should. Again, there's a, there's a lot of factors that we would need to make sure occur. It's always, whether it's recyclable or, and used goods, it's always difficult to make sure that we get a clean product so that we don't have to deal with the side waste stream if it's not clean. In fact, that's been, that's been the biggest problem with Asia and why they stopped doing the recyclables, is they found out that the waste stream that they were developing when they got out the recyclables was bigger than... was bigger than they anticipated. And so they felt they were just collecting everybody's trash and that's why things are shutting down as far as the recyclables go.
Yeah, I definitely don't want that to happen to us. I can't imagine accepting other people's trash or industry's trash. And so I'm concerned about that. How would that show? Where would we see that if you decide to do that?
So so like some of the industry has, you know, using plastics to to develop, you know, during the conference, we had someone bring a bench. Just recently, I was told that maybe that might not work here because of the heat and just just the way it's done. But there's other applications. So if we were being able to bring in all our plastic recyclables and maybe even start off with CNMI as just a target. And then then maybe the company can produce more.
No, I understand that what you're describing, the economics, but are you going to decide that by yourself? Is that going to be put before the board? Is that going to be put before the public? How is that going to show to the public that you have decided to accept other people's trash here?
Well, I would definitely would not be by myself, Senator. It would be first internally with the team and of course, we bring it to the board and the legislature. That is something that is that's not normally done. So definitely, we would not act as a solo agency. We'd seek assistance from the legislature to make make sure that we could do things of that nature.
All right. If if you're you discuss that with your legal and they tell you that you have that authority by yourself to agree to that, just could you just bring it to our attention? It doesn't have to be anything formal, but I just want to know that that exists, that that type of authority exists.
Senator, if I'm still in this position, I would not ever make that decision, even if I had the legal authority to do it on my own, because this is an island-wide issue and not just something that Guam EPA's administrator should make on his own.
All right, this this may be a little bit off of these rules because the this fund is not at all funded by citations. Is that correct?
That is correct, Senator.
Yeah. But I know that in the news recently, they were talking about, you know, the mayors want whether they issue citations or they don't and other people in in Guam, whether they are allowed to issue citations or they don't. And I know that EPA has said that there are other people in this community outside of EPA who are authorized to issue citations, but up to now, it's only EPA that's been issuing the citations. And that's why it's a slow, I guess, you know, everybody's reaction is, oh, just punish them, punish them, and that will cure our problem. But but it seems we have a huge reluctance to actually issue a citation. Or do you think they need additional training as to, you know, who to issue the citation with that investigation part or or just, I guess, very briefly, I don't want to go far off the topic, but.
To be honest, and I don't say this very often, but I'm leery to speak for the mayor's council or or the police department or anybody else that has the authority to issue litter citations. I know Guam EPA's team. We strayed away from it, but we are attempting to utilize that again. And when I say we strayed away from it, that doesn't mean we totally dropped it. We we actually went down the the process of doing notice of violations instead of the litter citations. But again, with with the new program manager, Glenn Sinikles, he's actually started issuing citations again. And we will see if that process still fills out and if there's any modifications to it or improvements, we would would come and seek your your assistance.
Thank you very much. Thanks again.
Thank you, Senator Tchulahi. Just one another question. So there was a question that was raised. What are the safeguards to ensure that the funds are expended accordingly to what's written in in the rules and regs? Do you feel the board in itself would provide enough safeguards to ensure that?
I do. I definitely do. I the board Guam EPA's board chair is here and I hate to put him on the spot because he's kind of like my boss too, but I definitely would recommend that we call him up and you could speak to the board directly and get their take on it.
Okay, yes. Mr. Perron, would you be willing?
Morning, Senators. I do believe this is something that the board could handle. You know, there's some real professional and well-meaning people on the board that would take the responsibility very seriously about overseeing the the fund and making sure it went to the places that it was authorized to go to. So I don't I don't see that as a as a problem. I think we could manage that pretty well.
All right. So basically, it's dependent upon who sits on the board.
Yeah, I would hope that you would confirm good honorable people to be on the board. And you have.
Good point. All right. So yes, I think, yeah, I think I don't have much questions. I am definitely I'm going to work with everybody, all the stakeholders and oh, excuse me. There's actually another question. Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The some of the programs that you have, such as the Guam Beverage Container Recycling Reserve, Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan Reserve, Green Waste Plan, Composting and Organics Reserve, Disaster Debris Management Reserve, and the Zero Waste Grant Management Reserve. Can you? Why is it in the state of reserve? I think Mrs. Sablon, maybe you could explain it.
Yes. I'm trying to get our recycling. I believe that as a team, we work as a team. So that's why I'm trying.
Good morning. I'm Sabrina Cruz Sablon, and I'm a special projects coordinator with Guam EPA. And this RRF project is something that I've been working on for years. So Vice Speaker, to answer your question, you're asking why these things are on reserve? Because right now, we don't have the statutory authority to put these plans in action. And we're working with the Office of Senator Perez to make those amendments. So as the rules, right now, the RRF rules that you have before you only shows the stimulus program and the project for the mayor's council for the island-wide cleanup. Those we have authority to to move forward on right now. These these other programs is something that we would like to do. And once we make the amendments, we want to move forward with your support.
If I could just add, Senator, Sabrina is in charge. She's our recycling manager. She has been working, as you all know, for a couple of years to get this done. And she's done a great job. And that's kind of why I forced her to come up here because she needs to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Yes, I'm concerned about that because you know, we have the the bottle bill that has yet to be implemented because of the funding sources not being able to, I guess, the funding source is not not available to implement the bottle bill. And I I believe it's a very good bill that the Speaker Barnes introduced. And so it seems that it needs some kind of capital to initiate. Can you use the RRF capital to initiate the bottle bill program?
Right now, as it stands today, we can't. So that is why we're trying to see if we can get amendments so that would would allow us. Because this bill has, I mean, this law has been in place, but as you all know, there is no funding source to implement this. But Guam EPA continues to get beat up on a regular basis about why we are not implementing this.
So and if this bill passes, this will help provide you an avenue to pursue this down the line to make changes and implement this kind of statute? Is this one of the goals?
Yes, this is one of the goals to allow us to.
All right. Well, we have to find additional appropriation because it seems like in this bill that the RRF is going to be under the administrative authority of Guam EPA. And we all know that we give pieces of RRF to the mayors. And I perhaps maybe some other agencies for appropriation. And so that's a it seems that this is not necessarily a battle, but something that we have to weigh out. And then also, I don't see any provision here for a full-time employee to administer these rules and regulations. It's this is a very tedious job. And I think this this rules and regulations is just scratching the surface of the many actions that need to be done in order to facilitate these RRF. Is there a way that you can implement a full-time position to administer administer this RRF if this is given to the rec administrative authority to EPA?
So first off, I totally agree with the statement you made. I'd like to say we understand Guam EPA understands that this bill or this fund is not for Guam EPA. This fund is for the island of Guam and the community. And so we will treat that appropriately, that we would we would work with whoever the stakeholders may be to ensure that the community benefits from from this money and this this fund. Second, as far as the permanent position, the statutes allows for a position. And we are currently working on trying to permanentize that position even without this bill, because the statute allows for funding for that position. But we are currently in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Leon-Grohl. Thank you, Mrs. Sablon.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. So I think it's it seems to me like the tide is turning. And we we recently are, you know, overcoming the receivership of the landfill. And now we have a perfect complement to this, which is how do we divert things going to the landfill? And I think this is a very powerful tool is the the revolving Recycling Revolving Fund. And I think working with the stakeholders, with the agencies, with my colleagues, we can definitely make this a reality. And I think the timing is is now. And so I, you know, again, congratulations on the hard work. And yeah, so it's definitely an important milestone we've reached today. So Sajad Massey for everybody who have come out here today.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Senator Perez, can you give me the opportunity, please, to thank Mr. Walter Leon-Grohl for and his team for such a fantastic job? I thank you for continuing to help the mayor's council with all the trash that belongs to all of us. But I also wanted to, I you asked a question about this bill being able to pay pay prior obligations. I didn't hear his answer.
Currently, the way it's written, mayor, it does not allow.
You know, that that's almost a perfect answer, but I would like an answer that says, no, exactly not, because you know, we're we're in dire need for for funds to to get rid of the trash that we have today. And I don't know what those prior obligations are. And if it has anything to do with trash, maybe that's worth talking about. But if it doesn't, please, you know, we would like to keep the the funds that are for getting ready rid of the trash just for that. Thank you.
So I, Mayor, I just want to clarify something. Part of the two the two options that are presented in this current bill is for us to provide money to the mayor's council to to for recyclable goods. Now, if you just talk about trash in its definition, in in our environmental world, recyclables are separated from trash. So we do not pay for the disposal of the trash for the mayor's villages. But we can provide the money for all the recyclable goods.
Do you? Does that include vehicles are being dragged to the to the to the to the public roads and just parked there? Is there anything that we can do to kind of stop that? You know, there's people that are just at night, I wish I had enough money to hire people to to make make sure that these people don't think that this is a game. You know, I I call that illegal dumping. And let me tell you, just Jigo alone has their roads have been decorated by by illegal dumping with with vehicles.
Yes, I understand the frustration and we my office is working on an amendment to this bill and rules and regs that will address that very same problem. And I know we had a round table recently. So we're working on bills that utilize the ideas that came from the mayor's council. So yes.
Ma'am, you know, you know, I'm not I'm not chastising the senators or or EPA. I'm just I'm just voicing out my the the problems that we run into. And I thank all of you for for trying to find solutions for all this, but people are getting out of hand here. And I I continue to repeat myself. I thank all of you for for what you try to do for for beautiful island that we call paradise. And some of these people don't know what that means. But I want to thank you and thank you and thank you. God bless all of you.
Thank you, two mayor. So yeah, in closing, I just want to thank everybody that's come out here today. I understand the urgency of this, and I think this is the first step in adopting these rules and regs. And it only can get better from this point with your input and your passion. So to do as Massey, everybody.
Thank you, Senator.
So upon that, if there are no further testimonies or questions, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation procurement is now adjourned. It is now 11:15.